Good afternoon. Welcome to the Moore County Board of Education Work Session for Monday, June 3rd. We've all just come back from the groundbreaking at the new school in Southern Pines and that was quite exciting. So, we're happy to have that to look forward to or behind us and to look forward to the construction to commence. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, seven zero. Ms. Carter.
Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, Dr. Grimacy, we have a long agenda today.
Yes ma'am, and we'll get right into it and start with an update from Dr. Metcalf regarding public comment on the proposed 2020-21 Innovative Year-Round Calendar.
Good afternoon, Dr. Grimacy, Madam Chair. It's been a glorious morning. I would like to give you an update on the school calendar. As you are aware, the May 13th Board of Education meeting, you endorsed the Calendar Committee's recommendation to take the 2021 Innovative Year-Round Calendar, put it on the website to get some public comment. We have been receiving public comments since May 14th and will continue to receive that through June 14th. We'll leave it up until June 14th. Want to give you an update of where we stand so far on that. We've had 379 respondents. Seventy-four point eight percent as of Friday were in favor of the calendar. There's been 138 comments. They range from confusion over the title, the year-round title, we kind of knew that might be a possibility, to real motivation for true year-round calendar, there's a number of comments about that. The desire to align to the military calendar, Fort Bragg's calendar, was some of the combat comments. Increased time at Thanksgiving break and October break, some thoughts about that, and then some clarification too, some misunderstanding about the intercessions, the intercession one and intercession two, thinking that students would be required to come to school that time. And of course, that intercessions one and two are just blocks of period of time where we would hold our STEM camps, our Read to Achieve programs, our summer school programs that we already currently run. They're not required school days for students, but there's some confusion over that. Many of those things, I think, the Calendar Committee could clean up in our next version that we would bring to the Board. So, we encourage parents to go back online and provide input up until June 14th, and of course, they can come to your meeting next week on the 10th if they'd like to make public comment directly to the Board. And then, our plan is to make a final recommendation to you at the July 8th Board Meeting. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about the calendar.
Any questions? I know I've been hearing a lot of positive comments in the public and a lot of the same types of questions that you have just told us today, so glad to hear those are coming in.
So, what would we target as graduation? Is that like May 28th, 29th?
Be the right before Memorial Day, and that's quite frankly, one of the concerns that have come up several times, that we would have graduations on that Memorial Day weekend, but that could be seen as a plus too.
Correct.
People traveling in.
Yeah, I've heard both perspectives on that. Some like it, some not like it, and most really don't have a position.
Those families would, that I've talked to said families would be there, that would be a good time for them.
Yes.
And certainly, they would know way in advance, so plenty of time to plan.
Well, thank you so much, and I'm glad that we're getting a lot of feedback on this, and we'll see where it takes us. Thank you.
With your permission, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Report from Dr. Seth Powers on the update, for an annual update on the district's focus on safety and security. I would add, as he's getting set up, that this has not been an annual report that we've given. Last year was, the report was necessitated on elevated public interest in the aftermath of the shootings at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, but in discussion with Mr. Locklear and Dr. Powers, we just felt that updating the public's knowledge on what we do about safety and security is timely at any point, and perhaps this may be a good time to do that. So Seth, we appreciate your diligence.
Thank you very much. I'm happy to be able to update you today on some of the work that we're doing to further strengthen our safety and security on our campuses. So, I'll be sharing some information with you related to reactive and proactive measures, as well as training, as well as our work around building strong school cultures, mental health needs and new initiatives. So, glad to be able to share this with you today. So, this is a little bit of a...
Do you have it too?
It's trying. There it goes. Okay. So, this is a little bit of a review as we update our reactive and proactive measures. Of course, I want to start by highlighting our Moore County Schools Police. In terms of safety and security, our police, in my opinion, are our district's biggest asset. The force is made up of 13 officers and a Chief of Police, with officers stationed at all secondary schools, except Elise, our smallest middle school, who was within a stone's throw of the Police Department in Robbins, and then also serving our elementary schools. Want to remind everyone that we do have annually updated crisis plans. These plans, for both the district and the schools, continue to be annually updated, and that includes not only the plans, but also the teams at each school, as well as the black boxes at each school. Our lockdown drills, which we hold annually for a year. This year, I'd like to point out that we actually had five drills on every campus because we had also a functional safety exercise on every campus, which I'll talk a little bit more about later in the presentation. Our collaborative and supportive relationships with outside law enforcement agencies. Do want to point out with the new leadership in the Sheriff's Office, with Sheriff Fields now in office, Dr. Grimacy, Dr. Locklear, Chief Frye, and myself met with Sheriff Fields and Chief Deputy Richard Manus. Our positive and supportive relationship with the Sheriff Department continues. Their office does have a rep on our Moore County Schools Safe and Healthy Schools Committee, and they did have a rep at each of our functional safety exercises at every school that we held this year. Also, other law enforcement and first responders were also at those functional safety exercises. And I would like to point out one specific example of how this collaborative and supportive relationship has benefited us, and it was very evident this spring when we had the perceived social media threat against Northmore High School. We found out about that threat at about 9:00 PM on a weeknight, and through the work of our Moore County Schools Police and the Sheriff's Office, by 2:30 AM, an arrest had been made. We were able to report, to communicate with our families early in the next morning to kind of relieve some of those fears that they had, so that's just one example of how those agencies work together, so that's great. Our Safe and Healthy Schools Committee, of course, this group is made up of district staff and outside agencies. We have a rep from Moore County Public Safety, First Health, Sand Hills Pediatrics. So, that's, that committee meets quarterly, at least quarterly, and generally more with some subcommittee meetings as well. Our school safety hotline, we have that, as a district have had it for many years in terms of both the phone number and a text number that parents or students can use to report danger or something that they feel like is not safe, or something that's going on at school that needs to be reported. I do want to share that we'll be evaluating the state's new system, their new anonymous reporting hotline, to see if that's something, is it better than what we have, is it not? But as that comes out and we have more information about it, we'll evaluate that and decide if we'll use the state's system or continue with what we currently have. And then finally, related to this, limited access to campuses. You know, our Operations Department continues to work to limit access to campuses through the installation of camera systems at the front doors, FOB systems, as well as building retaining walls inside the main entrances of schools where possible to create a vestibule and limit movement within the school and funneling everyone through the office. I do want to highlight some of the training that's taken place, both this year and last year as well. Threat assessment, threat and risk assessment training, all of our specialized instructional support personnel, and as I say, when I say that, just so you know, that includes all of our counselors, our psychologists, and our social workers. And all of our Moore County Schools Police Officers have received threat risk assessment training, and from this training, we've actually developed a standardized threat assessment process and a document that are now utilized in all schools. When we have a student who maybe demonstrates some behaviors that may seem troubling, we now have a process and a way to evaluate that student to determine, is there something else we need to do to support this student? The Columbia Suicide Severity Rating Scale, this is also a tool that we've began to use over the last couple of years, and this is to determine the severity of the potential for self-harm or suicide when a student demonstrates concerning behaviors related to suicidal ideation. So, all of our specialized instructional support personnel and school nurses have been trained on the use of this scale, and I would like to point out that it's also the same tool used by Sand Hills Pediatrics, who have the majority of, in terms of pediatrics, you know, they see the majority of our students in our school system, so it really expedites the process when we're using the same tool they would use there when we have a child that may need some help from an outside provider. The Prepare School Safety and Crisis Preparedness Training, I wanted to point out that this year, we had two days of Prepare Workshop Two, focusing on managing a crisis and recovery. That was for 40 of our specialized instructional support personnel, and those folks represented all of our campuses, so that we've done that as well. Active Shooter Simulation Training continues for our Moore County Schools Police Officer at the Samrekan Training Academy. So, you know, the most state-of-the-art active shooter simulation that they have there, we continue with that training. Youth Mental Health First Aid. As of January of this past year, of 2019, all of our schools now have a team of at least five staff members trained in youth mental health first aid, and basically what that is, it's training for staff members to help them recognize when students are demonstrating behaviors that signify a mental health or behavioral need, and then their job is not to diagnose or to treat, but their job is then to refer them to a mental health professional on campus who can support their needs. And then finally, Resources for Resilience. This is a training that we're able to provide this year through a state training for school safety grant, and this training occurred on three different dates over the course of the year. Staff were trained on being more trauma-informed. Staff from Aberdeen Elementary, Aberdeen Primary, and Community Learning Center at Peckney had their whole staffs trained, and then staff from Elise, West Palm Middle, Robbins, Vass, Santos Farm Life, and Pinecrest, as well as nurses, and some of our specialized instructional support personnel also attended. So, we had a total of over 150 staff members who were trained in Resources for Resilience this year. So, along with that, principals also received PD on Childhood Trauma and Adverse Childhood Experiences, or ACEs, which included viewing the documentary, Resilience, The Biology of Stress, and The Science of Hope. So, we are really kind of honing some things in on, and being more trauma-focused as a district in how can we support students' needs when they've experienced childhood trauma. When we talk about safety and security, I think it's also important to think about the culture of our school. You know, we certainly want our schools to be inviting places, we want them to be places where students feel connected and like they belong, and that they have positive relationships there. That certainly goes a long way toward promoting a safe environment for students. So, when we think about PBIS, we continue to expand that. All of our schools have had Module One training. Aberdeen Primary and Southern Middle have had Module Three training. This year, we provided Module Two training for teams at Cranes Creek, Vass Lakeview, Aberdeen Elementary, New Century, Elise, West Palm, and Pinecrest. And then a Module One refresher training was provided to West Palm Middle and Union Pines High School, and we also had a couple of staff members who went through Train the Trainer, the model for that as well, so they can help us with some training. Expansion of Capturing Kids' Hearts, and just as a reminder, Capturing Kids' Hearts is a model focused on building, again, that student connectedness and relationships at school, but it also focuses on adult behaviors. Southern Middle, as a reminder, is a pilot school for this model. All of their staff have been trained, and then also teams of five staff members from every Title I school have also been trained. We do also now have a long-term plan for training at other schools as well, and this summer, we have plans for the whole staff at Meddich Creek Elementary, since they're opening a new school and bringing two staffs together there, at Elise Middle and at Cranes Creek Middle, for them to receive Capturing Kids' Hearts One training for their entire staff this summer. Race-based disparities can also certainly have an impact on school culture. We continue to recognize the fact that we have these disparities and certainly want to work to close those race-based gaps. We continue to analyze data, we continue to talk about it quarterly. We've also done some PD with our administrators as well. Kind of felt like, okay, we're ready to rev this up and take the next step with this now after the last couple of years. So, for the 1920 school year, we're actually working with a group of Ed Leadership professors from Western Carolina University, who are going to come visit and be with us and provide seven days of equity training for our administrators, for our principals, our assistant principals, and some of our selected central office staff. And then finally, you know, when we think about school culture, you know, we also have to think about how do we determine what that culture is, and we certainly need feedback from our students in doing that. So, we've started to administer student surveys. This year, we gave a Social Emotional Learning Survey, a Youth Risk Behavior Survey, as well as a School Climate and Culture Survey. So, these, the data that we'll get from these, it will certainly help us to better identify and meet the social, emotional, and health-related needs of our students, so. And as a reminder, you know, when we think about, as I move on to the next slide to talk about mental health, mental and behavioral health, the identification of that need and really just the validation of it came from our 2017 Youth Risk Behavior Survey results that we got nationally, you know, where it really identified student mental health as a problem, not only for us in Moore County in North Carolina, but also nationally. So, having these annual surveys now will kind of help us track that, have some cohort data, and really stay on top of what we can do to help meet these needs.
Dr. Powers?
Yes, sir.
If I might offer a suggestion very quickly, for anyone who's watching this video, on video, and who may not be aware of your previous presentations, could you just very quickly, as best as you can recall, go through each of the surveys and what grade levels, so that we don't give the impression that all students are taking these surveys every year?
Absolutely.
What student groups are targeted by these surveys to make sure that we're not overdoing it?
Sure. For our Social Emotional Learning Survey, all students in grades three through 12 took that survey. For our School Climate and Culture Survey, only students in grades seven, nine, and 11 took that survey, and for our Youth Risk Behavior Survey, only students in grades eight, 10, and 12 took that survey. So, one survey for the year for all students in grades three through six, that was the SCL, and then at max, two surveys for the entire year for students in grades seven through 12.
Thank you.
And these are completely anonymous, correct?
The Climate and Culture and YRBS surveys are anonymous. The Social Emotional Learning Survey is not anonymous, but that is communicated, and that is, and the reason for that is, through Panorama Education, the platform that we use, we're able to get that data back, and then our teams at our schools, or then at counselors, for example, will then be able to really break that data down and utilize it. So, if you have a group of students who, for example, maybe grit's a problem, they're just, those students that can't just bear down and get it done and might give up easily, counselors can say, okay, I've got a group of 10 kids here that I can now work together in a small group to work on grit, to help them develop that persistence, to persevere.
You previously also explained that the nature of the questions on the Social Emotional Learning Survey were not personally intrusive as some of the questions on the other surveys as well. Could you just restate what you said previously about that?
Correct. There's, on the Social Emotional Learning Survey, as well as the School Climate and Culture Survey, there are no questions that would be deemed sensitive in terms of the Right to Pupil Protection Act.
Privacy.
Exactly. And the YRBS Survey does contain some questions that some folks might consider sensitive, which is why for that particular survey, we offer parents the option to opt their child out if they would wish to. And I do want to also remind everyone that all these surveys are voluntary. If the child sits down that day to take the survey and says, I'm not going to take it, nobody's forced to take the survey.
And are those done on, by computer?
It's done online through the Panorama Education Platform, and I'm going to speak a little bit more about that. That's new for us this year, so it is an online platform that makes it pretty easy for students just to get on. They can actually do it with any mobile device, but generally, it's through their Chromebook.
You said something about Western Carolina. Do you reiterate how they're being used or how that...
Sure. And we've, the group actually came down for a visit a couple of weeks ago. Ms. Dedman and I took them around to visit some of our schools. So, they're going to be focused, and we felt really good about the fact that they wanted to come do that and really get to know our community a little bit better. So, what we're doing now is building, you know, what is this training going to look like? And what we've kind of settled on is, is that the training will be, of course, there'll be some background information and different things to learn related to equity, but the crux of the training will be around a problem of practice, so that each school is going to identify what is, what is one big area of equity concern at my school where I have a large racial disparity? And then through that, the team is going to help each principal to craft their own plan with strategies for how to address that, and so we'll work through that throughout the course of the year, so that we're taking some action. We're not just sitting and...
Is this through a grant, or...
It's actually not. It's something that, as a district, that we felt like was important. I believe it's Title II is what will be funding that through.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So, and I will say that we're actually, we're getting a good deal on that, so it's, and our Ed Leadership, the Ed Leadership professors there at Western, they're very in, very much into social justice, and the fact that they are folks who have experience in the school system, they've been, they've been teachers, they've been principals, and now they're, you know, they're teaching teachers and principals, we felt like made them a good fit to work with a school system.
Dr. Brown, I met with the team, and the thing that impressed me the most was their approach targets the specific need of the school, as opposed to them coming in and telling the school what its need is. They work with the school improvement team and with the staff...
That's why I was wondering.
...to identify what that is, and then to build out from there, research-based strategies to address that. We've tried a lot of the one-size-fits-all approaches, and as you all know, that disparity persists, but this is a unique approach, and we really look forward to seeing where it goes.
That's why I was wondering if it was a grant, because then we'd have to go in as one-size-fits-all type situation...
Yes, ma'am.
...which we have not wanted to do, so I'm glad that we're kind of guiding it as opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Appreciate it.
Yes. Any other questions so far? I just realized how fast I was going.
Yeah. Well, those disclaimers are always important when it comes to surveys, and I appreciate you taking the time.
Yeah. Okay. Focus on mental and behavioral health. So, our BIT team, and of course, we've shared information related to our Behavioral Health Intervention Team with you previously, did just want to quickly point out that, you know, at the district level, we do have a five-person team, three mental health professionals, and then two behavioral health professionals who support some of our most needy students with the most severe behavioral and mental health needs, and they do that through consultation, through case management, through direct services, and that team has supported the needs of over 130 students over the course of this 2018-19 school year. And of course, keep in mind, we did not have that in the past. That's 130 students with some of the most severe needs that we would not have been able to provide anywhere near the level of support to without this team this year, so they're doing a great job.
When you mentioned severe needs, can you elaborate a little bit on that?
I can. So, when you think about, in terms of mental health, we're talking about children who have those anxiety issues, who have those self-harm issues, maybe it's cutting, maybe it's suicidal ideation, so we're talking about those children who, you know, when you do that Columbia Suicide Severity Rating Scale on these children, you know, they're maybe blowing the top out of this, and we know there's a real problem. You know, sometimes, you know, children might demonstrate some of those types of behaviors, and you can work through it and get to the bottom, and it's not really as much as a crisis as it may have seemed in the beginning, but then we have those children who really do have some severe needs that they need, they need some therapy, and, you know, that doesn't always come, you know, parents may not always be able to get that therapy from an outside provider, so...
Or know how to access.
Or know how. So, our group can help the parents, you know, to know where to go, what to do, and then, in the meantime, while that's happening, our folks on the mental health side of the team can actually go to the school and do that therapy. So, if it's going to take six, seven, eight weeks to get this child in to an outside provider, in the meantime, let's not wait, let's go ahead and be meeting with this child, working with them, providing therapy to them. Now, when they start with the outside provider, you know, that therapy will stop because you don't get therapy from two different professionals, but they'll continue to be there to support and to follow up, so, as an example. And then you've got the behavioral side of it, so that would be your children with the most severe behavioral needs, yeah?
And so, for ones that you identify, the students, Seth, who may not have been recognized with an issue by parents, are the parents receptive to the feedback and the information that you're providing them?
You know, I would say in general, they are. You know, sometimes, you know, we do run into parents at times who may not want to see possibly what we see at school, but the good thing about our team, these are all the people on our team, all but one were actually already Moore County Schools employees who've come to join the team. They had good relationships within the school system already. They were itinerant, serving multiple schools anyway, and tend to have that great relationship, and all of them are able to have those conversations in general, you know, to help parents understand we're just here to help.
Exactly.
We're just, we just want to support your child and you.
Where are their member, team members housed?
And they do that through consultation, through case management, through direct services. And that team has supported the needs of over 130 students over the course of this 2018-19 school year. And of course, keep in mind, we did not have that in the past. That's 130 students with some of the most severe needs that we would not have been able to provide anywhere near the level of support to without this team this year. So they're doing a great job.
When you mentioned severe needs, can you elaborate a little bit on that?
I can. So when you think about, in terms of mental health, we're talking about children who have those anxiety issues, who have those self-harm issues, maybe it's cutting, maybe it's suicidal ideation. So we're talking about those children who, you know, when you do that Columbia Suicide Severity Rating Scale on these children, you know, they're maybe blowing the top out of this, and we know there's a real problem. You know, sometimes, you know, children might demonstrate some of those types of behaviors, and you can work through it and get to the bottom, and it's not really as much as a crisis as it may have seemed in the beginning. But then we have those children who really do have some severe needs, that they need, they need some therapy. And, you know, that doesn't always come, you know, parents may not always be able to get that therapy from an outside provider, so.
Or know how to access.
Or know how. So our group can help the parents, you know, to know where to go, what to do. And then, in the meantime, while that's happening, our folks on the mental health side of the team can actually go to the school and do that therapy. So if it's going to take six, seven, eight weeks to get this child in to an outside provider, in the meantime, let's not wait. Let's go ahead and be meeting with this child, working with them, providing therapy to them. Now, when they start with the outside provider, you know, that therapy will stop because you don't get therapy from two different professionals, but they'll continue to be there to support and to follow up. So, as an example. And then you've got the behavioral side of it, so that would be your children with the most severe behavioral needs. Yeah.
And so for ones that you identify, the students, Seth, who may not have been recognized with an issue by parents, are the parents receptive to the feedback and the information that you're providing them?
I would say in general, they are. You know, sometimes, you know, we do run into parents at times who may not want to see possibly what we see at school. But the good thing about our team, these are all, the people on our team, all but one were actually already Moore County Schools employees who've come to join the team. They had good relationships within the school system already. They were itinerants, serving multiple schools anyway, and tend to have that great relationship. And all of them are able to have those conversations in general, you know, to help parents understand we're just here to help.
Exactly.
We're just, we just want to support your child and you.
Where are their member, team members housed?
They're housed at the Ed Center. They work out of the Ed Center.
Last year, this was still a vision and now it's a reality.
It was.
A very important.
130, and those were 130 being missed every year. And yet, our BIT team members would be the first ones to tell you that they could use some help.
Exactly.
There's probably a few more, a few more. Seth, thank you very much.
Mental health is real.
It is. It is. Also this year, and I'll give Ms. Dedman credit, our Mental Health Providers Consortium, you know, this was kind of her brainchild to think about, let's get these, let's get our outside providers together in a room, and let's have some conversations and talk. Let's have them talk and tell us, what do they provide? What can they do? And then let's us tell them, what are our real needs, and what, where can they help us? So we've got a group, we've had at times anywhere from five to seven, we've had generally five outside agencies. Sand Hill Alternative Academy, which is also known as SALT, which is a fairly new day treatment program. One-to-One Youth, Pinnacle Family Services, Sand Hill's Pediatrics, and Therapeutic Alternatives, who we've all met together. And that's been, that's been a great tool as well, to kind of, just something else to know who, how can we support one another, and who can we call on when we have these needs for, to hook children up with someone outside of the school system. And then finally, the resiliency training, you know, I spoke with you about that and shared what we're doing with it. And of course, that's again related to childhood trauma. So just, I think anything that we can do to better educate our staff and help them to understand that a lot of these behaviors are because of things that are happening either at home or that have happened in the child's life in the past. And what we've talked about is the fact, if you've not had a chance to see the documentary I spoke of earlier, you know, Resilience, The Biology of Stress and the Science of Hope, I would suggest it. And what you'll come away with from that is that you'll find yourself, when you think about these children, you're going to ask, it's not going to be, well, what's wrong with you? It's going to be what happened to you when you think about these children. It's not, it's not always a choice that they're acting like that. Ninety-nine percent of the time, it's caused by something else.
And I have seen the film, and I will also say that it allows you, as a participant watching it, to really understand how your reactions to folks that have had childhood traumatic experiences can be moderated just by knowing that it exists. Is there an opportunity for, at some point or a goal, for a number or percentage of staff to see this film? It's very short. It's only an hour.
Yes, it's an hour. That's right. We did, we shared it, we did a screening of it with our principals this year, and did some activities around it as a part of one of our Leading and Learning Meetings. Some of our principals did borrow the movie from us and showed to their staffs. Not everyone has, so we'll continue to talk about that and how it's, you know, how that might be used. Cindy and I actually talked about, we might need to go ahead and buy another couple of copies of that, so.
Well, if there's an opportunity that you would, it would be appropriate to invite us, I think it might be good for us to see it, or have the opportunity to, if we're interested. So thank you.
Absolutely. All right. And then finally, you know, a lot of, some of the things that we've talked about here were new things, some are things that we continue to enhance and build upon, that we've done in the past. I'll be very honest, I'm very proud of the things that are listed on this slide. These are all things that were not in place last year, just like our BIT team. So we've done a lot, and we've come a long way in a year's time. The state safety grants, the state put out the opportunity for these grants over the summer last year. We applied and received four of these grants. One was for SRO positions. Through that grant, we actually had three of our SRO positions renewed and gained an additional position, bringing our total to 13 officers. Also, a mental health professional grant, which we applied for and received, and that provides funding for one of the positions on our BIT team. That's where one of those positions comes from. The Training for School Safety Grant, as I said earlier, that provided for that resources for resilience training, the trauma-focused training, so that grant provides funding for that. And then finally, a safety equipment grant, which provided about $63,000 for a campus emergency alert system on each campus, and also security camera upgrades. So, and I'm going to talk more about the emergency alert system in just a moment. Functional safety exercises, I shared with you earlier. This is kind of the next step for the tabletop exercises that we did with our CERT teams year before last, so this is kind of the next step there. Had an exercise on every campus. Moore County Public Safety was crucial in helping us to do this. They actually had some grant funds that they used to help us, and we actually provided food, very good food, at every one of these exercises, and the staff really appreciated that as a part of that. So basically, it was like a lockdown drill, but besides that, we had outside agency folks on the campus and really going all over the campus as a part of it, to kind of learn what we do and to check what we were doing and what worked and what didn't. And then we sat down afterwards and had a debrief session where we talked about everything and what needed, what worked well, what didn't. So very valuable. One thing that came from these exercises that we found was that, especially at Pinecrest and Union Pines, our two largest campuses, when I asked the question, when we started to sit down to debrief, and I said, how many of you heard, did everybody hear the lockdown when it was announced? And I had six or seven people raise their hand that they did not, they did not hear it over the intercom or on the radio. And it was, I don't remember his name, but it was a Union Pine staff member who said, wow, wouldn't it be great if we could have something like the old air raid sirens from World War II that could go off so that it just real loud, and everybody knows what that is? And we thought, man, that's a pretty good idea. As we researched this safety grant and the amount of funds that we could get from it, turns out, we could put a system like that on every campus. So basically, we piloted it at CLC, it's there, and now we're working to install it on all our campuses. But basically, what it'll be, will be with the push of a button, that these loud sirens will go off throughout the campus. And I was honestly, it's better than I expected. I thought it would just be the siren, but it goes off with a siren, and then it says, it says, lockdown, 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 secure yourselves behind closed doors, or locked doors. And then it says it in Spanish. And then it repeats, and it just keeps repeating until it's cleared. So the great thing about that is, if you're outside on the athletic field, or you're in the band room and everybody's blowing their horn, you're going to be able to hear this. So it just, it's another layer of making sure everybody's communicated with quickly.
It's a signal different from a fire drill.
It is a very different signal. You would not be able to confuse that with a fire drill. No, sir. So we're excited about the, about that, that system being put in place. Active Defender is another new initiative. It's a school safety app for staff cell phones. It is, we piloted this app at Carthage Elementary School in the fall. We're now working to install it on each of our campuses. Basically, what it is, you've got it installed on your phone. Each campus, when you've got, when it's up and running, you have a map of the school. Looks just like the school where you're at. And then each staff member on the app will show up as a dot, either a green dot or a red dot. And that, one thing that staff members were very excited about when we shared this with them was, is that means that, you know, the, our card system is something that would not necessarily have to be used any longer.
Sorry.
Because it's something that could now be, can now be on the phone. So, so that was, that's a positive thing related to that. The other great thing about it is, you know, you don't have to, you know, you pull up to school in the morning, you get out in the parking lot, and you see something, you see a person, you know, who you're concerned about, and you feel there's a need to call a lockdown. Well, what are you going to do if you're in the parking lot and this person is headed toward the school? How are you going to alert somebody quickly with the app? You know, it's the push of a button. Everybody's phone that has the app will alert. And in addition, that siren that I just talked about, as we get into the school year next year, will go off with the push of a button, and so quickly, everybody is made aware. And we know that seconds matter in that type of situation. So very excited. It does many other things. I'll tell you more about it as we get, as we go on later, but it's a, it's a very, very neat tool for safety. Panorama, again, that's our, the survey platform we've used this year. It's new to us, but it's been great so far. I can't tell you the ease with which you can disaggregate data with it, to break it down just quickly. And as I said, you know, by schools, by grade levels, you know, gender demographics. So it's a great tool. We look forward to using that data as we get into the, into next year and what we've learned from this year. Many cell towers on our more remote campuses, and this is something that IT can't, kudos to his staff for working to get this accomplished on some of those remote campuses so that our, where signals are spotty, we know. And that way, our Moore County Schools police and first responders who are on those campuses are guaranteed cell service. Not everybody on the campus, but those, but those officers and first responders would be guaranteed cell service. And then finally, a partnership with K2 Solutions. We developed this partnership to allow K2, K9 teams, socialization and training opportunities for their puppies and young dogs on our campuses. And from that, the district receives the benefit of improved safety and security and the ability to call on K2 services in the event of a suspicious package or a bomb threat situation. So we feel like, feel like that partnership only enhances what we're already trying to do to further enhance our safety and security on our campuses. And with that.
I will just have to say thank you for sharing all of this information. I'm sitting here very conflicted. Conflicted because we need to have these services and programs, but I'm also pleased that the thoroughness that you have taken and the health and safety team and your, and your staff in looking out for the mental health and the physical safety of our children. So I'll just say that, I'm conflicted, but I'm happy that we have these services, so thank you.
Would I also ask at some future time? I'd love to see, like, just some very broad numbers of the, with the kids that the BIT team is now helping, elementary age, middle school age, high school, I don't need a major grade breakdown, and maybe even sex, is it how many males we're helping as opposed to how many females?
Okay.
And that's just, having been in a high school, I'm sure that we're reaching out to more high school students. But I know that middle school is really, really tough, and of course, it's trickling down.
It is. At every level. You're exactly right.
And when you see the ACES movie, you'll see how, in the elementary, you can start to pinpoint some of those needs when those children are impacted with trauma early, early on. If it's caught early, you can do a lot. Otherwise, you need to, you know, use the middle and high school years, you know, to catch up and provide the services they need. So you'll, you'll probably see elementary in there more than we expect.
Sure.
My comment, Seth, I'm really happy to hear the new initiative, the ones we're using. And I saw the movie too, I think we saw it together at one of the school board things. But also, I had the mental aid, mental first aid, first aid, all good programs, so it's much more comfortable now. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
I want to say kudos to the app. The reason why I clapped is because I've been in that classroom with no windows, and I've had to slide my green or red card, and I didn't know where it would land in the hallway, just hoping that it would land and our kids wouldn't get scared because we didn't have a window to post anything. So I think that app is going to be tremendous, tremendous.
I'll second that one. I was in a classroom where you had to open the door to put the card out, and I'm thinking, you know, I'm going to open this door, and who's standing there?
Yeah.
You never knew, because we couldn't get it under the door.
Right.
On the exterior.
So I think that's very exciting.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Powers? Thank you very much for the thorough review of all that you've been able to accomplish this year.
Thank you very much. Sorry, it was a little long.
No, it was great.
It's okay. All right. Next item.
Madam Chair, I believe we have 13 business items under pending action and discussion.
That's all? Are you telling us to hurry up?
And, no, but I am, that is the cue to our staff to remind everyone that board members have had their executive summaries in advance and the materials, and each individual's task is to reintroduce the topic and make themselves available to answer any questions. And first up is Ms. Amanda Dixon.
No pressure.
Don't feel the pressure. Who carries the banner of setting the standard for everyone that will follow.
It is short and sweet, but it is the time of the year for us to take a little bit of time to review our learning planning system or our strategic plan for CTE. You'll note there are not any major changes. This is a transition year for CTE as a whole in its entirety, being that we are transitioning to Perkins Five and getting ready to fall under some different funding guidelines. Last year was a really big year for middle school expansion. We're going to continue that work, and just want to see if anyone has any questions.
I did not have any questions, but I just want to tell you, when I read through this, the plan, this is something we're going to have to remember, because I get a lot of questions about what we do for CTE, and your plan is so well laid out. You really, really see all the effort that goes into supporting our middle and high school students, and it's all here. So now I'm just going to send people here.
If you ever have any questions.
How is it different, how is, I saw the planning, but how is it different with Perkins Five?
Perkins Five is going to change some curriculum options. It's going to provide additional opportunities.
What we've been fighting for.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Much needed.
Thank you.
Some updated curriculum. You're going to see some freedom to do a little bit more with our middle school, less restricted funding than what we've been faced with. It is a restart to CTE. It is probably the most different changes that I've seen since we went from vocational ed to career tech ed.
Okay.
Lot more career-oriented, industry-related. A lot of the stuff that we've been trying to implement because we could see what was coming with, you know, job shadowing, credentialing, work-based learning opportunities, and really trying to, you know, up our game with our curriculum. And so I think we're ahead of the game, so that's a good thing. But the big key is that we're going to be able to do more with our middle school than what we've been able to in the past.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Angela. Well done. Dr. Metcalfe?
Yes. With the 2019-20, next year's standard day schedule, standard day schedule includes a start time for both teachers and for students, includes the beginning and end of lunch rotation, estimated times when buses would arrive on campus, and when they would arrive back on campus after delivering all their students for each of the schools. Only minor changes from last year's standard day schedule. I think High Falls moved their lunch, all those changes around lunchtime rotations. High Falls moved theirs from 10:15 to 10:40. Crane's Creek from 10:33 to 10:56. It's all about scheduling. There's, we always get questions about the start time for lunches, particularly for the elementary grades, how early the start times are for lunches. Talked to a number of the principals about that. There's a number of reasons for that. One is, for most of their students, they don't eat breakfast, or they eat breakfast at 7:00 a.m. For many of those students, before 7:00 a.m. So 10:30, quarter of 11 is truly halfway through their workday, if you look at it that way. In addition, they're trying to get, it's about scheduling. Sometimes they share staff with other schools. They're looking for blocks of time, the literacy block, the 90-minute literacy block being key in that. So that really, and quite frankly, the workday for, and prep time needed for cafeteria workers also impacts some of that. So that is some of the reasons for that early start time. So we ask that you endorse our 2019-20 standard day schedule. Any questions?
Is there any change for Farm Life or Bass Lake View with their lunchtimes?
A little, their lunchtimes remain mainly the same.
But their numbers should be a little thinner inside.
Minor changes there, because it's really not impacted by the number of staff at those two locations. It's impacted by the blocks of time they wanted for their students.
May not have to serve quite so many children so quickly.
They will not have to serve so many so quickly. That's correct. And remember, it's the beginning and the end of a rotation, so it's not that everybody's eating at 10:30. They bring them in over a period of time.
At least they'll have a place to sit.
At least they'll have a place to sit. Yes, and in fact, Nora was saying she's less concerned, she used to have classes in there, so she had lunch going on with classes there, and that's a tremendous benefit to her now. classes there and that's a tremendous benefit to her now. She won't have the noise issue that she's had in the past.
Any questions, comments? Thank you very much, Dr. Metcalf.
Thank you, Dr. Metcalf. Ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Bridget Johnson, and I believe, nope, Dr. Johnson has C. And then I guess we've got Dr. Powers after that.
Good afternoon. I am here to present for your consideration and endorsement the renewal of the contract for Discovery Ed streaming. We've been using Discovery Ed streaming since 2000 and it has been a steady resource for our teachers to download videos and curriculum resources that are aligned to the standards. We have seen an uptick in usage this year and so we are considering it for yet another year. DE is undergoing some updates. They say it'll look more like Netflix where you click on things that, it'll have icons that you click on that is very user friendly and appealing. So we're looking forward to those changes and the professional development that they'll be able to provide. So I'm here to answer any questions.
And since the contract exceeds $50,000, it requires school board approval.
Yes, thank you.
Is the, excuse me? Is the cost any different from previous years?
No, in fact, the cost stayed the same.
Good.
Yes. We did add McDee, I will say, we did add McDee to Creek.
Thank you.
And so that did add, but the actual base cost per school stayed the same.
Great. That's always good when things stay the same.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. And now we'll invite for an encore presentation, items D and E, Dr. Powers.
Sir, I'd like to present to you the community response to the proposed name of the Union Pines High School Auditorium stage. So at the, the May school board meeting, the board authorized us to seek community input, which we did. An online survey on the Union Pines High School homepage was made available from May 14th through 20th to all students, parents and staff members and any other interested citizens. Connected messages were issued to all Union Pines High School families and staff to advise of the survey and to invite the public to attend a community forum at Union Pines High School on May 15th. The survey outcomes were decisive. Of the 250 people who provided a response to the online survey, 99.2% indicated their support of the proposal. Only two respondents expressed opposition and no one made alternative naming suggestions. Support for the proposal was also confirmed during the May 15th community forum. 10 community members were in attendance and although the attendance was small, those that were there were absolutely in favor of the naming of the stage for Ms. Judy Osborne. Four of the audience members spoke in support and all attendees indicated their support by raising their hands. No participant raised their hand or spoke in opposition to the proposal. So based on this community input from the survey and the forum, go from there.
And staff recommendation is?
And staff, yep. The recommendation would be to move forward with the naming of the Union Pines High School Auditorium stage.
Might I ask, is the auditorium already named and if so, for whom?
I believe the auditorium is named for Jim Steed. Is that, I believe it is?
Something like that.
That's a former teacher, I believe a teacher who was killed in automobile, automobile accident, I believe. I'm not.
So this would be naming just the stage?
This would be naming just the stage.
Yes. Any questions for Dr. Powers?
Yes.
With your permission, Madam Chair, we'll move on to item E.
Number of out-of-state field trips for your consideration, six in total. Very quickly, I'll run through these. Union Pines High School was requesting for their junior varsity and varsity volleyball team to be allowed to travel to Coastal Carolina University for a team camp on July 12th through 14th. Union Pines High School was requesting that one student be allowed to travel to Louisville, Kentucky to compete in the National CTE Skills USA competition. This student is Gavin Temple. He placed first in auto service tech at the State Skills USA Conference in Greensboro, qualifying him for this opportunity. The trip is planned for June 24th through 29th.
With a chaperone?
With a chaperone, correct. Union Pines High School also is requesting to send their two yearbook editors along with that staff sponsor to yearbook camp in North Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. That, that trip will be planned for June 24th through 27th. And then Union Pines High School and Pinecrest High School together are requesting, this will be students from both high schools on one trip, send members of their, their S2S or their student-to-student organization to Washington DC for the national training seminar sponsored by the Military Child Education Coalition. And that trip would be planned for July 22nd through 26th. And that, they would be traveling together with a Union Pines staff chaperone. And then likewise, a request from Cranes Creek Middle and Southern Middle, a combined trip for the same purpose, but at the middle school level for their, their junior S2S students to travel to Washington DC for the same MSEC National Training Seminar. And that trip is also July 22nd through 26th.
Dr. Powers, if I might, just to advise the board, I'll be very pleased to greet those students when they arrive in Washington DC. As a member of the Board of Directors for the Military Child Education Coalition, I will have already been in Washington for one day for our board meeting. And so on, when the students all arrive on, I believe it's Wednesday morning, Wednesday, Tuesday evening perhaps into Wednesday. Anyhow, I'll be there when they arrive. I'll be there the first half day that they're there. Looking forward to that.
That'd be, that's exciting.
What about Pinecrest? You didn't talk about that one.
Yep.
Before you do, did I note that they're traveling by train?
Yeah.
That in itself is a unique experience, one that most of them will not have had.
Yeah, exactly. And then the last, the last one is Pinecrest High School. This trip is actually for the fall, October 18th through 20th. But the request was made in order to give them, they wanted approval so they'd have time to go ahead and get things in order in terms of fundraising, what they need to do. So they're requesting that their, the 19, 2019-20 marching band be allowed to travel to Nashville, Tennessee for the purpose of, of recruiting and competition. So, you know, that the trip will serve to attract students to join the marching band and provide the opportunity to compete in a nationally recognized competition. And then there's a plan for a stop at Dollywood on the return trip home. And it is a, it's, it's a very, it's a large and well-known competition, but it's going to be a quick trip. So the trip is planned for October 18th through 20th.
I just have one question though. Will any of these trips require funding from the district?
The CTE funds are used for the, CT and student funds are used for the Louisville, Kentucky trip for the Union Pines High School student. The other trips, the, the Washington DC trips, that will be funded through Military Impact Aid funding. The other, Union Pines High School volleyball and yearbook camp are funded through the, the school and the students. And the band is funded through the school and the students.
Just want to make it clear that the funds, like the CTE, are part of that program already and none of this requires special funding by the Board of Education.
Correct.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right then, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Powers.
May I suggest a quick five-minute stretch break?
I would hope you would.
I was wondering if it was about time.
Because my seat was going like this.
No comment. Quick break. Back to order. Next item on the agenda, Dr. Remesey.
Madam Chair, Mr. Barath is responsible for F, G, H, I, J, and K.
Do you know why I took a break?
Yes, ma'am.
All materials are presented to the board. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, John.
No, Mr. Barath, we'll, we'll allow you to have just a few more minutes. And in particular, item F is of great importance and we're, we're excited about that one.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Item F is the bid results for Northmore High Edition and Renovations. As previously reported to the board, we received the bids back on May 2nd. The apparent low response, the responsible bidder of Montith construction was just over $1 million over the budgeted amount for the construction of the project. Following that, as reported, staff, architect, engineers, Montith Construction Company and their team, we met a couple of times reviewing options for material selections, building systems, construction sequence and items that may allow us to reduce the cost without compromising quality, sustainability and operation of the facility. On the executive summary, the following items were identified as elements that we term value engineering that can be removed from the project. These do not compromise the safety and sustainability of the facility. We'll just note that halfway down, the removal of the mat hoist in the gymnasium scoreboard, the shot clock, metal shelving, science prep room, refrigerant ice maker, these are not being eliminated from the project. We are pulling them out of the construction budget and we're going to fund those when we do the FFNE for the project. So the others are all changes to the project that we will be encompassing into this as proposed.
John, if I would, just to correct, the mat hoist for the gymnasium, did the staff not tell us that they prefer not to have the mat hoist?
They wanted to have the mat hoist.
They do want the mat hoist?
Yes.
Okay. I misunderstood that from the conversation. Okay. I just want to make sure the record was clear on that. Thank you.
You're welcome. So the total of these value engineering items would reduce the contract amount by $425,900. So one of the other options that was in the alternates for the project was to install terrazzo flooring in lieu of vinyl composition tile. There's a cost of $379,000 to install that in all the instructional spaces in the corridors. This is the standard that we had applied to the current school construction projects. The, for elementary schools is the terrazzo, as has been explained to the board previously in how it is sustainable and actually reduces our FTE demands at the school. So by putting that alternate into the project and taking the value engineering items out, the difference between the award price and the budget as previously presented is $970,000. So the following item is kind of a tabulation of where these funds come from, how we're going to make up this difference of $970,000. So we have the base bid amount of the 12.9 million, adding in any zero dollar cost bid alternates and the terrazzo flooring increases the cost by $379,000. The value engineering reduces it by $425,900, taking it to just over $12.8 million. The available budget for the project, as previously explained, was just over $11 million. And also added to that was a proportion of the inflation amount of $881,000. There's a new line item in there, you see, the fire suppression, water storage tank and pumps, $290,000. Through our dialogue with the county about this was an unforeseen element at the time of the project budget was being developed and at the design, that the water delivery to the school site is inadequate to provide the fire suppression for the addition. The suppression for the addition is a code requirement. There's no option to not install that. So the county has opted to go ahead and increase their borrowing amount, still within the limit that the commissioners had previously approved, by $290,000 and adding that to our budget. So that takes the budgeted funds up to just under $12.2 million. The difference then becomes $680,000. And to achieve that, we take the remaining amount of the inflation line item, which was $121,000, and adding a portion of the contingency to it of almost $560,000, which would reduce our contingency to $252,000. While that is much lower than any of our current projects, when you look proportionally to the amounts, we feel confident that with that amount and the work that's been done to date, that we can still complete the project within the budget as presented. I will also note that in your packet, we have revised the project budget sheet in there. This is the one you're familiar with seeing. I'll pull it out so you guys can see what it looks like. it looks like. You're familiar with seeing this budget sheet numerous times, and the change on here, as identified at the bottom in red, is the addition of the $290,000 in there, which brings the total project to $15,692,000, up from about $15.4. And so, it's with the recommendation of staff to award the project to Monteith Construction in the amount of $12,875,100 with the value engineering and the alternate items as presented, and I'm here to respond to any questions you may have regarding this.
How do these reductions compare to some of the other schools, the reductions we've taken at the other schools?
They are consistent with them, with the exception of the deleting of the tile. This is the third item down on the value engineer. It's a wall tile and in the floors as well, and putting an epoxy down. However, being that these are locker rooms, we haven't encountered those on the other projects, we are confident that using an epoxy consistent system applied to the floor in the locker rooms will achieve the same standard as the tiles will in there. We also believe that putting an epoxy paint on the walls in lieu of the tile in those spaces will also achieve it because it's a consistent, homogeneous coat. There's no seams or anything.
And this is easier to clean?
Easy to clean.
This would be over concrete?
Over the concrete floor and over the block walls. Correct.
So, quality hasn't been compromised?
No questions about quality or duration and sustainability of the product.
Just for the record, since we know that this is a big chunk going toward the Torazo to be able to put this in, how does that save us money?
It saves us money because Torazo, even though we've had a history of doing this, you do not need to wax it in schools. Our finishing standard, we have elevated to where the finished grinding of the Torazo requires just a seal coat, and that's it. We do not need to strip it and wax it multiple times a year. That alone in itself, with the FTE, full-time equivalent of staff to do that, reduces that need over the course of a year by about .6, .75 in that range. Also, the costs, the cost of the stripper, the cost of the wax, and the time distraction it takes from doing other duties at the school. Also, Torazo will outlast this facility. It'll outlast all of us. Anytime you go to New York City, you go into some of those original buildings and high rises, that's original Torazo in those facilities. So, you can see that it's a product that is meant to last. It is nearly indestructible to the activities that go on in the school as well.
Except for those, excuse me, for those reasons, we've put Torazo in all of the new construction now underway.
We have, correct.
It's nice to have equity in similar materials so that we're managing it all the same.
Yes, ma'am.
The payback time for this is?
For the Torazo?
Yeah, yeah.
Apologize, I don't recall that. I presented that.
Twenty years. I remember looking at it.
When we did the McDeeds Creek, and I do not recall that.
I believe it was twenty years.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is good if the school's going to be around for a hundred, so. Are there any other questions or comments?
It does come with superintendent's recommendation for approval, as do all the other pending action items, and I neglected to mention that as we went through.
Thank you very much. Mr. Barath?
Next item is the bid results for the plumbing and fire alarm system at Temporary Pinehurst Elementary School. As we recall, when we issued the bids for this, we did not receive any bids for the plumbing manifolds to be installed to these temporary units. So, we immediately reached out to contractors again, asking them to consider bidding on the work and issuing revised drawings to them, scoping of work just to that. We also, following the opening of the bids last time, learned from the Pinehurst Fire Chief that he's found that there are other acceptable modifications to the fire alarm system that can be done that would substantially reduce the cost of the fire alarm system without compromising safety. So, we withheld that from the board, and on May 23rd, we received bids through an informal process for the plumbing and fire alarm. We received two bids for plumbing, and this time only one for the fire alarm system. The apparent low for the fire alarm system with Central Security Systems, they are here in Southern Pines, with a bid amount of $72,500. The fire alarm bid previously was $168,000. So, this was a reduction of over $95,000. The plumbing manifold, we had received two bids, and Fields Plumbing and Heating here in Carthage, the amount of $65,090. Immediately following the bid opening, we met with the contractors. They had identified other options and opportunities to conduct some savings and value engineering in it, and also working with the village of Pinehurst to confirm that all revisions would be acceptable. And the plumbing manifold bid was able to be reduced by $1,710, and the fire alarm system by another $20,500, increasing those savings to about $116,000. None of these changes will compromise the safety of the occupants nor of the facility itself, and we recommend that the contracts be awarded to Central Security System and Fields Plumbing and Heating amounts as indicated, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
I just want to say, this is wonderful that we've found savings of $116,000. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
I know this was hard to get to because of the bids, the number of bids we didn't get, so, thank you. Any other questions?
Comes with superintendent's recommendation, Madam Chair.
All right.
With your permission?
Yes, next item.
Item H, Mr. Barath.
Bid results for the data wiring doorway access McDeeds Creek Elementary School. In April, we received bids through another informal process to install the data wiring in McDeeds Elementary School. This is for data that goes to computers, as well as to cameras, speakers, wireless access locations. That's typically what you see with the blue data cabling in our facilities. Two bids received, and each bid exceeded the limit for an informal bid process. That is $300,000. Staff and the design team noted that the bid submitted included the actual cameras, included the security system devices, included the act. They had bid everything instead of what they were supposed to bid. And so, we immediately reissued the project for bid with clarification, as just to include the structured cabling, as well as the access control. And on May 22nd, we received two bids for this, and the first bid of $223,000, and the second bid for over $350,000. So, the apparent low in responsive bidder is Interconnect Product and Services. They've done similar work such as this throughout schools all across North Carolina, and as our recommendation, the superintendent and board a consideration award to them in the amount of $223,000 for the work upon which they are already itching to be out there and start.
And those dollars, are they from the contingency fund?
No, these are from the technology fund on the budget sheet. You'll have under the furniture fixture equipment, you have the FFE for furniture, and then you have a separate technology line.
Okay, okay.
And it's within our budget.
Okay.
And it does come with superintendent's recommendation.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
I would say, John, it's also fun to say that this is sort of like the last remaining infrastructure installation we need above the ceiling tiles, and that once this is done, all the ceiling tiles will then be in, lights, and we're close to showtime.
Getting closer, every day.
That's right.
Do you have an estimated completion date?
We're looking at-
Don't mean to put you on the spot.
Middle of July, and I can't remember if it's the 15th or 17th. I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, middle of July. That's good. Thank you.
And currently looking at a ribbon cutting approximately?
We're looking at in August, and that's a further discussion that we will have to have the setting for students, faculty, and everyone to be a part of it.
Okay.
Some of us might want a preview.
We can maybe arrange that.
Just an idea. I think it would be nice to have a preview.
I think as far as the public interest goes, that we're looking at mid-August in that vicinity, mid to late August.
Yes, sir.
Exciting. Thank you.
Very exciting.
With your permission, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Items I and J, Mr. Barath is going to need some help from Ms. Love Lady.
Always need help from her.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have two items to present for Child Nutrition Department today. The first is the 2019-2020 bid awards and renewals for the upcoming school year. The Office of Child Nutrition has renewed bids through the North Carolina Procurement Alliance for the following items, and they had minimal impact to the cost from last year. This will be our general food purchases, snacks, supplies, produce, and chemicals. We did submit an invitation for bids for beverages, which was also issued through the North Carolina Procurement Alliance, and the bid opening was on May 9th at the McKimmon Center in Raleigh. There were three responders to the beverage bid, Aberdeen Coca-Cola, Pepsi Bottling Ventures, and Cisco Raleigh LLC. Beverages are awarded as line items, and the bottom-line numbers are based on estimates that we provided from the first half of this school year and projected what the second half would be. As you can see, Cisco won most of those line items, water 16.9 ounce at a cost of $13,350, sparkling water at $9,990, 100% juice 10 ounce at $1,645, non-carbonated juice an 8 ounce at $3,038, carbonated juice an 8 ounce at $13,981.35, sweet tea 12 ounce at $855, and lemonade 12 ounce at $356.25. Pepsi won a single line item, which was isotonic's 12 ounce, which would be your Gatorade, at $3,093.75. Those prices have been compared with the costs from the current school year, and any increases are reasonable, and the Child Nutrition Office recommends approval as presented. We have also issued an invitation for bids for milk and ice cream for next year. Unfortunately, because of the late opening of the bid on May 29th, we were not able to get those results for this meeting, and we'll present those in July. Are there any questions?
Just one question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm guessing, based on the monetary figures on each one of these, we can tell which one students like more?
That's part of it, and then some items are only available at the high school or at the high school and the middle school because of the smart snack regulations.
Any questions? Comes with superintendent's recommendation for approval. Item J is Love Lady.
Yes. This is regarding the Child Nutrition meal fees for the 2019-2020 school year. Federal regulations require that school food authorities participating in the national school lunch program ensure that schools are providing the same level of support for lunches served to students who are not eligible for free or reduced-priced lunches, or paid lunches, as they are for lunches served to students eligible for free lunches. And that's what you've often heard, the term "paid lunch equity." They want to make sure that it's equitable across the board. But for the 2019-2020 school year, Congress has provided a waiver that only school food authorities that had a negative balance in their nonprofit school food service account as of December 31st were required to establish prices based on that paid lunch equity provision, and this act is effective for one school year only. They did a similar thing last year. Moore County Schools Child Nutrition had a positive balance in the school food service account as of December 31st, 2018, and the program was showing a modest net gain at that time. So, it is the recommendation of the staff that the paid meal cost for breakfast and the paid meal cost for lunch remain the same for the 2019-2020 school year. The current cost is $1.25 for K through 12 breakfast, $2.50 for K through 8 lunch, and $2.75 for 9 through 12 lunch.
And the superintendent is pleased to support the staff's recommendation of no change in our lunch fees for the coming year. Any questions, Madam Chair?
Any questions or comments?
Or feedback.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Love Lady. And back to Mr. Barath for item K.
And this is the facility use application fee structure. And in summary, working with staff and schools, we are proposing to maintain the schedule in the fees as presented for last year for this upcoming year as well. I will note that just prior to walking in here, I noted an error on the very last page of the agreement, page nine, where I still had down there Amanda Cagle as the Director of Child Nutrition Services, and I will have that changed immediately to be Jan Love Lady for Child Nutrition Services.
Her due reward, recognition. Superintendent recommends this. Board members, I will note that there's no statutory requirement that you approve no change in facility rental fees from year to year. However, it is a good discipline for a board and its staff to embrace, because this is a typical expense that if the board does not review it annually with changes in administrative staff, this is the kind of thing that just gets forgotten. And so, this is an annual rite of, rite if you will, that we bring it before you. We don't anticipate major changes from year to year, but it's a way that a board can monitor these expenses over time and be clear. So, do you have any general questions about our facility fees? I know, Ms. Thompson, you've had experience in the past, but this would be a good time. If you have any general questions about our facility rental and fee structures or guidelines, just-
Have there been any difficulties with, you know, any of the people renting our facilities?
Have not. We-
How are they, how are we made aware if they are?
School principals have responded favorably to this in working with their constituents and their communities about using the facility. There have been local entities that have been identified to get the liability insurance coverage that they are needing to have on this and to work with them.
Good.
So, they're directed to those individuals to get the coverage required.
Okay.
It's been positively received by the school administration at every location.
Good.
Now, that said, I do think it's fair to say that there have been a few groups that were used to being able to be handed a key.
Yeah.
And they had their own access to the building anytime they wanted. We've ended that. We had a few bumps in the road, helping people understand that we just, the taxpayer-funded buildings couldn't have, be accessed by certain groups, and they had to apply, you know, abide by these guidelines for all groups. We've worked through a few of those.
I mean, something standardized, I think, has been a benefit to everybody, because people understand what's expected of them. We can look at and not overbook somewhere as happens other places.
I do think the standardization has been important, that all groups know that they're, they have to follow the same rules. And I think Mr. Barath has done, and our principals have done a very good job of negotiating that process. And John, we're now into two years of doing this, right?
Correct.
So, I'd say now, because this was an issue that you and I recognized early on in our first year working together back in 15 and 16, and, well, 14. You joined us midway through 14, 15. So, I do want the record to show that we've had to go through a process. First, we had to get the rules. We had to make sure we had the rules established, and the board was very supportive in getting those. Then, make sure the principals understood how to enforce the rules. And I would say now, as we get ready into this third full year, that we're feeling very good about where we stand with that standardization of the rules.
Do we have facilities or principals who have just decided that they're not going to use their facilities for rental?
It could be. Any outside groups that after we standardized the rules, they just had to use some other facilities, or?
There have been some that have, and that's been mostly due to the times they wanted to use them, whether it was late evening, and the school didn't have anybody who can go open the facility for them, and they were pushed or directed to another school to try to make other arrangements. So, there has been some that has not been able to work out with, but I have not received calls of frustration about that from them, that they could not get over it and find an alternative solution.
Yeah, those would have been situations in the past where maybe they were actually given a key, and they could come at their convenience, and we just simply couldn't.
They're given a key, and sometimes they would come unlock it at 3 o'clock after the school closed and leave it unlocked all night long until 9:00 or 10:00 at night. Then, they'd come back and lock it up, and so, that's where key control and access had to happen, to maintain safe facilities.
Right. That would be consistent with our other safety and security precautions that we've taken.
And that's also how times have changed, in some ways. It's a response to that. And also, we're recouping costs that we have in terms of air conditioning and custodial and all of that, so. Thank you for keeping on top of this and having a process, because it's good to open our schools when we can.
Yes, ma'am.
Have the right.
So, the superintendent does recommend no change in our application guidelines or fees. And now, have Mr. Cox come forward for items L and M?
All right. Item L is the risk management plans, and before you hear is the plans that require board approval on ones that are over $50,000. The first one, property coverage. The premium renews in August, so we don't have new dollar amounts, but the premium that was paid for the FY19 school year was $113,227. We're expecting a 3% to 5% increase for- We're expecting a three to five percent increase for rates for the next school year, then we're going to have to add the value of McDeeds Creek on that, so it's going to increase a little bit when we get our renewal in August for the property coverage. Automobile coverage, inland marine, the premium seventy-four thousand five hundred and twenty dollars, total increase of five point four percent. Part of that increase is the additional value of, and additional Chromebooks that are being added on to this insurance. That renews for July one through June thirtieth. The other risk management policy that is above the threshold for approval is workers' compensation insurance, a premium of two hundred and one thousand, which is a slight decrease over this current year, and part of that is being that our modifier rating decreased, meaning that our claims have decreased over a three-year period that they use to determine that rating. So we recommend approval of these risk management plans. Total costs, as I mentioned, total costs of all our risk management plans is four hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
I understand on the automobile and the inland marine, what, exactly what is, is the inland marine? I mean, I know it's all part of...
We go through this every year.
I have the same question.
So it's...
I'm sure I've heard it before, but I just...
So it's for our coverage, it's primarily the Chromebooks, primarily.
Oh, okay, okay, so Chromebooks, okay.
And Mr. Cox, do you have any reason why they call it inland?
I have no idea.
Neither do Mr. Bunny.
Because it's not marine, it's inland marine.
I can inquire about that, no, but yeah.
School board members across America want to know.
I understand.
The student accident coverage, is that like a primary coverage or supplemental coverage?
So, the student accident insurance is a supplemental coverage. On our student athletic forms, there is a statement that parents are responsible for primary coverage on there, and this coverage we have is supplemental to that coverage.
Okay, so students are expected to have their own health insurance when they participate in sports, and this is just supplemental in case something happens?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct, yes.
That isn't already covered.
Thank you.
Yes, correct.
Any other questions or comments?
Anything to add, Mr. Cox?
Nope.
Okay, Madam Chair, the superintendent recommends the board's approval of, of the risk management coverage plans for the coming year. Mr. Cox, if you would, just very quickly advise the board as to the improvement you've made in this presentation this year, just for the public record, as to why we don't have as many renewals this year as we've had in recent years.
So, as I did include in the packet, all the risk management plans, those that are under fifty thousand dollars and those that are over fifty thousand dollars. Board approval is only required for those that are over fifty thousand dollars, so those are the only ones that we're bringing to you for approval, but we are making you aware as in the packet, all the risk management plans.
You know, you may not have this here, but what is the overarching percentage increase or percentage decrease if you look at all of our, and if you don't have it, that's okay.
For the total package?
Mm-hmm.
I did not look at that.
That's okay, I was just curious.
But I will, I'll get that back.
Because I saw some of the, some of them went down, and then some went up, so I was curious, but a later date is fine, thank you.
And as soon as Mr. Cox is ready, he can do item M.
So the next item is the continuation budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty year. The amount is essentially the amended budget resolution, third quarter budget resolution as of May two thousand nineteen. This will allow us to continue our operations into the twenty twenty school year until a full budget can be approved, and as we know, the state budget probably will not be approved until sometime after July, so we won't have a full budget to bring back to the board until the August or September timeframe. And this continuing resolution will allow us to continue our operations until that resolution is brought back, and happy to take any questions.
And the superintendent would recommend that the board authorize the staff to be able to pay our bills into the summer.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, item N, as always, the staff will appreciate the board's direction on how to organize the recommended pending actions in section three. I also want to point out that the draft of the agenda that you see that's been connected is, already been updated. There are some other additional recognitions that we've added, so typical of this time of year, we have lots of student and staff recognitions, and we anticipate that. We have added a few that, that aren't currently showing, and so if you're wondering about something, just check with us after the meeting, we can let you know.
Thank you. So if we're looking at items three A through three N, which of these items do we want to...
Three M.
Yes, M. Which of these items do we want to consider for board action, if any?
I had none.
I don't, I don't, all of them consent.
All of them seem to be consent.
Now, recently, we have been doing name changes, pulling that out to...
That has been your practice.
Recently, that has been our practice, I mean, so we could pull out this stage...
And awarding the bid for major construction projects, that has been your practice to make that board action.
Yeah, so D and F would be the only ones I would consider.
If you continue to follow that rule, D and F would be your only board action items.
I'm okay with that.
You okay, Ms. Thompson?
Mm-hmm, yep.
All right, so D and F will be on board action, the rest on consent. All right, that ends our business portion. We do have time for board comments. I will start with Ms. Thompson this time, if you have any.
I, I just wanted to take an opportunity to recognize our, our board members. We, we have been, over the last three, four weeks, to lots of different activities at school, and, and as we showed up, we also, we always saw another board member, and, and I think that's different, but kudos to you guys for going to the scholarship banquet, the FFA. I mean, there's been tons over the last two, three weeks, and, and I just think that is commendable to just take the time and be a part of, of the activities. Also, I wanted to, just another shout-out to our Patriot soccer ladies. That was tremendous that they made it all the way to the state, had overtime, overtime, and I think that was the first time in history of, of the school having gone that far. And then, out of all the last two, three weeks to end the day, historical day down in Southern Pines, just monumental, from start to beginning to the end, and again, everybody in attendance, I just think the day has just been, just amazing.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I didn't have anything other than this morning was great. It was, it just brings, brings back of why we're really doing this, and it's those smiles and the excitement of those children, that we're so excited to be there, and one child even said to me, "Is this where my building's going to be, where I'm standing right now?" I mean, they just, they couldn't fathom where they were and what, what was going on, so it was just, it was wonderful. It was a great morning.
Just have to, on the same line, what's so exciting is to see these new facilities sort of in transition or progression, or whatever you want to call it. You know, we're getting ready to open one, Aberdeen is just coming out of the ground, and the, the, the site at Morganton Road is spectacular. On a clear day, you can see the Pinehurst Hotel, stand at the top of the site. So, I'm looking forward to watching that progress, and thank you to everybody that had a hand in, in the groundbreaking, it was, it was just a great day.
Again, I, I too, it was wonderful to see the children get so excited, and their teachers so excited, but I also want to remember that last year, with the student support services, what we didn't have, and then looking at Dr. Powers's list of what we do have now, and I'm thinking back of the children that I had over a number of years that could have used some of that help. It brings tears to my eyes, Libby, because this is so important for our students and our families in the community, to see these preventions before it happens, so that we don't become a Margaret Douglas high school. I'm just very thankful that we have done, made such progress over the last year, and so I want to thank and commend the staff for their hard work, and the community for their support.
It's all good.
I'd like to add just a little bit to what Ms. Thompson was saying about the events going on with something every night. This is really to the principals and teachers who've been inviting us, and please note that we appreciate every invitation, and if you want to spread them out through the year next year, so that we actually can get around to a few more of them, that would be appreciated. We, event, it's just event on top of event on top of event, and no way, even with Ed cloned, that we can all get around to these events, so, by all means, continue to invite us, and we'll make the best efforts we can to get to them, but know that sometimes, you know, an invitation has arrived just fifteen minutes before the one that you sent out, and so we've already made a decision, but we would love to come to some of these things in August and September and October as well, so...
April, May, and June.
Yeah, yeah, earlier on, so, we do appreciate it, it's been a great time.
Our student musicians, though, do appreciate having ten months to prepare for their end-of-year showcases.
And we do know they have Christmas concerts, too, you know, so...
They do, and they have those as well.
But, yeah, just so many, so many, many good things going on, we just would really like to see them all.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I think I would echo everything that you all said. What I really appreciate about the end of the year is just to see the culmination of some of the hard work that has been done. The only thing that's left unsaid is just to wish those that are still in testing well. I know our high school students are still continuing or just began some of their testing this week, and I'm looking forward to graduations this weekend. It's the most exciting time to be here at Moore County Schools, when you actually see the work that all these students have put in, and the teachers and the staff, and as they take their diplomas and move on, is just truly, truly, really the pinnacle of the year, so, thanks, everybody, for their hard work.
One more thing, don't forget that we also, with all this glorious things, we've still got a budget that we need to get approved by the county commissioners, so please let your county commissioners know that you support our budgets.
And that's a good point. Tomorrow at ten thirty, we're going to hear what the proposed budget is for the county commissioners at the courthouse, and then on June eighteenth is their public hearing, and that will be at five thirty PM. They will also vote on the same day, so, you know, send emails, make your voice heard, what your thoughts are on the budget, and we appreciate that.
Helena, there's one thing that we didn't say that we did go to, was the Pinehurst Elementary, and I just wanted to make a quick thing about that, that she had a kind of a saying goodbye to the school, and you can walk the halls and visit the classrooms, and a lot of it was important to me, because of course I taught there for so many years, and to go back into my classroom and actually see some of the stuff that, that was still there on the wall, and I peeled back a bulletin board, I'm like, "There's my painting!" So, I mean, it was just kind of cool to see that, and it's going to be, it's sad that it's going away, but it's going to also be wonderful with the new building.
And it was really, genuinely a pleasure to meet some of the old principals, the old staff, old students, there was a lot of hugging, a lot of tears. It was very, everybody was reminiscing, but also looking forward to the future, so it was, it was a great, great event, so kudos to the staff that put that together.
Yeah, and, yeah, that's another thing, teachers that didn't have to go there on Saturday were there, and that's, that speaks volumes, so...
Yeah. All right, is there a motion to go into closed session?
Madam Chair, I move the board enter closed session for confidential personnel matters and to consult with the board attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute one four three dash three one eight, point eleven, A one, A three, A five, and A six, and General Statute one fifteen C dash three one nine.
There's a motion, there's a second motion and a second on the table, any conversation? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, seven zero.